Morning, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We will call meeting to work this morning. Ann Rice, would you please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and for which it stands, one nation, united in the people, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, can you roll, please?
Councilmember Canfield?
I am here, but I will be leaving at 7:45 to get on a plane to Grand Rapids.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
And Mayor DeVore?
I am here.
Item number two, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right. Item three, citizen count. Items not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Josh Webb. We're about 125 South Grove Street. Was here last city council meeting when we were in discussion of the community garden. I just want to kind of emphasize what I let off last council meeting. And we're not opposed to any community garden. The only thing that we are voicing is just primarily the location. A community garden, they speak that they are trying to help the ones that are in need and feed the ones within our community. Again, we think that it's a great idea. However, let's look at the size of the garden. Between the sidewalk and the edge of the street, it's not very big. There's roughly four to five thousand people in the city of Lowell. And we'll use their numbers of four to five cars daily, even though everybody that lives on Lowell, on South Grove Street, is significantly more than that. But let's use their numbers. So four to five cars is twenty-eight to thirty-five families. Assuming, on average, of those families being three to four people, that's two percent of the population in the city of Lowell. Not making that. I was raised, if you're going to do something, let's do it right. Go big or go home, right? They are put together a GoFundMe to, for legal purposes, to fight this. And their goal is roughly nine thousand, a little over nine thousand dollars. I happen to have a greenhouse, a friend of mine that owns a greenhouse in Grand Rapids. And without maybe a discount for ordering valuable plants, I can get eighteen plants for ten dollars. You divide that nine thousand that they're trying to fight this for, that's fifteen thousand and two hundred plants. That's a lot. That can serve and help this community if that money was raised. It's supposed to be community-based, bring the community together, help those in need. Ever since anybody that's been opposed to it, that's voiced their opinion, we've been criticized, we've been ridiculed, we've been ostracized from the community. It's the opposite of their intention of bringing the community together. They attack my religious beliefs, my views, because I said that I go to church and I give. I didn't say financially, I didn't say my time, I just said I give. And frankly, it's none of their business, but I support giving. I help others. But yet I was ridiculed for standing up for what I stand, for what I believe in. The city, I know, has given several different options to, frankly, make both parties happy. Different location, the city, or the library. I think it's great. And then I wanted to touch base on the audience of the garden. They say their purpose is to feed the ones in need. Well, the majority of the people that we witnessed utilizing the garden, they all have vehicles. They all drive to the garden. Those that are truly in need, they don't have a vehicle. Because you put food on the table long before you have anything else. And so the ones that are truly in need, they don't have the vehicles, they don't have the food. Those are the people that, within our community, that we can help. And there's already an established organization that's from, that is targeting and helping those. And now, recently, they accept programs. So why don't you help donate them? Now, I know that the garden itself doesn't produce all their food. They have a lot of people donate. And so that's, you know, and they're such opposed to moving the garden. But most of the food that the garden can produce is such a little amount. Most of it's all come from other people. So what difference does it make if it was at their home or is it the library? Another gal last city council meeting pointed out that if the garden, community garden, wasn't at that location, she didn't want to have to travel all the way to Lowell.
Okay, we've rocked up the five-minute limit, so.
I got like one minute left.
Wrap it up. You sure?
The most west side of Lowell is La Higas, and the farthest east is the Rollaway. It's two point six miles. It's not very far. So I think at any point, any location within the city, as long as it's a bigger lot, more plants, more to help people, I think it'd be more beneficial. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else to public camera?
Hi, I'm Sally. I'm also a resident of South Grove Street. And I also agree with Josh, it's not the garden that we have concerns with. I think it's a wonderful idea. I've lived on South Grove for twelve years. It's six houses. It's a dead-end cul-de-sac. We all know each other. We have for a decade. Our kids play together, and all of a sudden, there's a lot more traffic. And we're trying to adjust to it. I have an eleven-year-old. He's got a scooter, he's got a bike, he's crossing the road. Doesn't mean he's playing in the road. But he has even voiced concern to me about how many cars are on the road. I agree with Josh. He's definitely more than four or five a day. My guess would be ten. It really disappoints me that we were not considered when the garden was created. It directly impacts us. Traffic on that road, hence not even be consulted is disappointing. I am, or I was, and I still am, afraid to speak up about this because, like Josh said, just to voice your concerns, get your house described on Facebook, people driving by, people, you know, telling you that they're taking pictures of your house, and they're... It's nerve-wracking. And I'm still nervous to say I'm worried about the traffic on my road, which is sad. We've been ashamed, like Josh said, on Facebook, for worrying about traffic at our home. We do support the garden idea. We just would like to see it at another location.
Sally, thank your last name. I'm sorry I missed it.
Hayden, H-A-Y-D-E-N.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Paula Mirendorf, and I live at 303 Reverend Jane Drive in the Valley Vista subdivision. I am a volunteer at the Creekside Community Garden, and I have been managing it since 2013. So for the last five years, I've been coordinating the garden and coordinating the people who volunteer and the people who garden there. And I've been out down for the last couple of weeks, so I just recently today found out about some excitement that's happening in Lowell around community gardens. I am actually very excited to hear that we have people in our community that are interested in community gardens. I did not do a very good job of communicating my garden when I put it in place. And so we haven't known a lot of people, we've had some people. But I wanted to make sure that I came today and mentioned that it sounds like we're in a new area in our community. It sounds like community gardens are something that we haven't done much before. And there are a lot of questions about it. It sounds like the city is working on deciding how and where those lines are going to be, and our residents are also having a voice in what they feel is important and how they'd like to be recognized. And I think it's great. That's part of what I love about Lowell. We're here, we're talking, we're interested in having that conversation. And so I was thinking, I just wanted to propose, it's the end of the summer, our gardens are a disaster, everything's dying, and the big work is about to happen where we clean everything up and get it ready for next year. And so I just thought maybe now is a good time for us to put all of this on hold and maybe get together this winter. I'd be willing to be part of a committee or a group of people to work with the city to talk about where those lines are and where those rules are. Because for all we know, we have five to twenty more people in our community who are interested in starting a community garden in our areas. And that's exciting. That's something that we love to embrace. So maybe what we could do is we could help our city council and help our people in our neighborhoods make that a little easier so that everybody understands where those rules are. Because I truly believe that people do the best they can, and everybody wants to protect their families and protect the people that they love. So maybe if we could put some rules in place, I just wanted to volunteer. I think it would be really great for some of the people who are having some of the trouble with some of our gardens to come and help with those conversations. Because if you just have a group of people who all are excited about gardens, we have blind spots. We may not know some of those pain points. So just wanted to voice that opinion and say that I'm interested, if anybody's interested.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, old business is empty to new business.
Mayor DeVore?
Oh, sorry, you have the two letters. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, the first letter, dear councilmembers, my name is... Now, help me out with this again. Jocelyn?
Jocelyn Kostyneski.
I am Ashley Webb's sister and Joshua Webb's sister-in-law. So the daughter of Sophie Webb and Skylee Webb are my nieces. I am writing to you because I am concerned for my sister's family's safety due to this community garden that the neighbors that live near them have in their front yard. I did visit Ashley and Joshua Webb in July last year. I got to see the beautiful Lowell, Michigan, and their house on Grove Street. I am familiar with the street. I understand these neighbors want to help the community by giving out free vegetables and herbs. But what is concerning is that they are bringing strangers right to their house and my sister's neighborhood. One, it should be done at a stand in the parking lot instead of traffic congestion on Grove Street. It is causing the neighbors on Grove Street to have extra cars parked on the street. It gives them a hard time getting their vehicles out, and not to mention vision being locked, trying to see pulling up from Grove Street to Main Street. It is a stop sign, not a traffic light. Two, it is bringing strangers in the scope out of the houses for possible break-ins or robberies, and not to mention pedophiles or human trafficking, basically endangering the welfare of our children. Violating the children who live on that street rights to play in front yard or ride their bicycles because of the increased traffic. They could get hit by a vehicle or abducted. How would these people who own this garden feel if their child, if there was a child killed because of someone, someone driving around or coming down Grove Street? Didn't see the child, and then the child was killed. I don't want it on my family's expense. We don't need, or anyone else need, a tragedy to prove a point to these people who doesn't get it what the problem is. I lost my husband suddenly May 1st, 2016. I don't need the phone call that something happened to my nieces, sister, or brother-in-law. Three, what if someone falls on their property? I watched the news report. I saw an elderly woman cooking vegetables. Four, she has young girls helping her, again, safety. What if something, what if someone pulls up and snatches one and drives away? What will they say then? Also, what if someone sneaks, what if someone makes the turn too sharp and hits one of the girls or a customer at their house? I own my own business with my husband for four years. You always have to think of what-ifs and safety of your customers. You have to be up to code. That's why people hire lawyers if they get hurt somewhere or in a car accident. Jocelyn Kostyneski. And this is at 503 New Street in Pennsylvania. And then the second letter is, dear city of Lowell. I have been observing the drama on social media regarding the Help Yourself Garden, and all I see is pointing fingers and personal attacks and threats, which really doesn't portray the garden in a positive light. Because how can you be a community-centered if you are attacking others not listening to both sides with an open mind and that anger? As a relatively newer resident in this town, it's honestly disheartening to see such behavior. That being said, I think that people need to put the negativity in the past and focus on the overall concept of garden, community. What the roads are doing is honestly amazing, but how much more amazing would this be in the heart of Lowell? As a mom, we would love to go to the library if the garden or Help Yourself stand was over there, and then after picking out the books, the kids can pick a fruit or a vegetable on the way out facilitating healthy habits. In addition to having it over there, community members can place family favorite recipes for others to try and take. A similar idea to the lending libraries for recipes. The idea behind the garden is to build community and give to others. A community build of a garden would facilitate that idea to the next level. How amazing would it be to build a garden together and grow together, both our gardens and our community? Imagine being there working on the plot while others are there, and tips can be shared and friendships can form because you see them more often than on occasion run in a neighborhood road. If people don't want to plant there, then they can still have the option of dropping off extra food into personal gardens. Sure, having something right outside your home is convenient, but if the focus is truly on the community, then why is there such a pushback to make the reality the best that it can be? In my previous neighborhood, there was a garden, and the others can come and grow and build it up, and build up the community. The concept is there, but I think we need to find middle ground, stop the childish attacks, and keep an open mind by keeping the community first and foremost. Sincerely yours, Crystal Banks.
Just those two, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, new business five, item A, fairground feasibility study. Michael?
At the summer sixth, 2018 Downtown Development Authority meeting, board approved budget funds for Williams &amp; Works in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to conduct a feasibility study of future use of recreation parks once the Kent County Youth Fair vacates to their new location. We have requested Williams &amp; Works to approach this study in phases. The first phase would be for background with city administration and other key representatives regarding the property. We would then begin a community outreach phase where we would hold a charrette to show different design and use options. And we would also have survey where we would then take information from those engagements and utilize towards designing a plan. After this, we would finalize a plan, take steps to the implementation once the fairgrounds were relieved. I have a copy of the proposal and attached this. While the project is in the DDA district and they are a separate legal body corporate, they have the ability to enter into their own agreements. Being that the city owns the property, however, I would like the city council's approval for the DDA to conduct the study. I recommend the city council grant permission for the Downtown Development Authority to conduct a feasibility study of the future use of the city-owned recreation park.
Michael, is there a date when they are going to be coming, writing yet?
No, there's not. They have not confirmed a date with the city, but it's probably a few years out, and now's the time to start thinking about what we want to see for that. That's why we're designing this and moving in the direction that we are.
And it's going to be a community engagement. We're going to reach out to the community to try and find what they want.
I'd make a motion that the Lowell City Council grant permission for the DDA to conduct a feasibility study of the future use of the city-owned recreation park.
I'll support. All right. Any discussion or other questions, Mike? Sue?
Mayor DeVore?
Yep.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Item B, water and sewer authority, Michael?
As the Lowell area continues to grow due to the economic climate in West Michigan, this provides many changes to our community. As we know, both Lowell Township and Vergent Township are growing at a rapid rate and will continue to grow. In addition, the city is seeing additional growth possibilities as we've seen businesses, expansions, and new housing projects. The city itself is nearly built out. One of the looming issues we will need to explore is expansion of the water and wastewater plants in order to accommodate future demand. In addition, as more people move into the area, there will be, there will continue to be a demand for greater capacity to the water and wastewater systems currently. Furthermore, the majority of growth in the Lowell area will be in the surrounding townships, not the city. Recently, I asked Mayor DeVore, Mayor Proton Canfield, Lowell Township Supervisor Jerry Hale, and Vergent Township Supervisor Tim Wittenbach to meet and discuss this topic. I suggested the idea of the city selling the water and wastewater treatment facilities to an authority where all three communities enter into the authority and be for representation in both utilities. This will be similar to the North Kent Sewer Authority, which covers the city of Rockford, Alpine, Cannon, Cortland, and Plainfield Townships. During our discussion, I recognized that many aspects of this would need to be researched. Concern over future expansion, rate structure, operational issues, all need to be explored. I also recognize this might not be something the townships may be interested in, nor in reality may be able to presume. This being said, I believe it does not hurt to do further research on the topic. When we met, the two township supervisors were at least open to exploring this further. In addition, they would present this idea to their township's boards to see if there's interest in investigating further. So I'm here tonight just gauging the city council to see if there's interest in exploring this option and would entertain any type of discussion on this matter. So one of the things that really kind of triggered this with me in the last couple months is what you're seeing really in Kent County is, you're seeing, you're seeing, obviously, in the south end of the county where Caledonia, Fire and Center, that area is growing exponentially, and it's relatively going to be built out. Obviously, your Cascades, Ada's, Grand Rapids Townships, those areas, those are pretty built out. And you have, you have various areas to the north in Rockford. And obviously, with the issues they have in that area, there may be, there may be a deterrent for future development there. I don't know. But what it kind of brought to my attention is that really the east side of the county and is really where the next growth cycle, in my opinion, is going to be in this area. And since we are, you know, we are a very desirable area to begin with, I could see the potential for more, for more growth in this area, which then now we have to start looking at the services that we provide and how we want to do that. And one of the things that I thought of is, you know, maybe set up an opportunity where, obviously, the growth's not going to be in the city. Maybe there's an opportunity where there's equal set. And that was really what my, my thought process was, was when I, when I started having the conversation with the mayor, Mayor Proton Canfield. I had those conversations with them, and then reaching out to the surrounding townships to see if they would be interested in it. And I truly, you know, I truly believe that this area is going to be, in the next twenty, thirty years, is going to be a high-growth area. I think it's a very desirable area, and I think there's, I, quite honestly, I envision, I really envision this area to be very similar to where I grew up, where I grew up in McComb County. And twenty years ago, I remember, thirty years ago, I remember there were pumpkin patches right off the main drag of M-53 and M-59 in Utica where I grew up. And that is now one of the most built-out areas in the state of Michigan, that whole corridor. And it hasn't been that long a time. And I, with all of the demands going on in West Michigan, I gotta think that that opportunity is going to be coming to this area as well. So just trying to throw it out there to see where this goes and how we want to move forward.
I think it's a great idea, you know, stay on top of it. Now, our water's probably in a little better shape than our wastewater.
Yes, our water font's in better shape than most wastewater font. It's not necessarily to try and, try and get rid of the asset. That's really not the intent. It's just maybe think about it differently.
Right. Gives the people who are going to be having an increase in demand a lot of say. I think Jerry and Tim were both open to having some say over what, you know, they're arguing right now. And they understand it's a process and it's going to take discussion, I think. I was glad to see they were at least open to it.
Yep, this is a long-term plan. This isn't anything that happens short-term. But we got to look down the road and be prepared for it because growth is coming our way, not so much as the city, but the townships. They're sharing in our assets already, and it just is a more equitable way of funding that. Think that will work well.
You're just looking there for a consent?
Yeah, I just want to see if there's, you know, I think, yeah, I think discussions need to continue. Probably at some point, all three community parks sit down and maybe formulate a study to research this and put the full document and report back and then decide if they want to continue to move forward. And we may see that this just isn't going to work, and, you know, we don't even have to look at it differently. But I still think it's important that we try and look at this as a, you know, as all, as an equitable partnership.
And it's, I mean, it may work in one direction, not the other.
Right.
It may get...
We don't know where, we don't know where this will go. We really don't. But it's something. I think it's, I think it's important to start thinking about.
Well, South of Town is a perfect example. You're one business that cascaded all nationally from that whole thing blowing up. Especially, you know, they were talking about residential developments. There are some home stuff like that's going to have quite a draw on the system, a lot like Sprint Store or something like that.
Right.
I'd like to see the discussions continue. No objections to that, I would imagine.
No.
Go forward.
Okay. We'll, we'll reach out to the township supervisors and we'll, I'll report back.
Everybody good with item number B?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item C, Resolution 2718, designation of September 21st, 2018, as Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day.
The Michael J. Bowes, Chapter 18 of the Vietnam Veterans of America, will observe Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day on Friday, September 21st, 2018. Brief ceremony will be held at 2:00 PM in the chapel of the Michigan Home for Veterans in Grand Rapids. The attached resolution proclaiming Prisoner of War Missing in Action Day will be presented by Mayor DeVore during the above-mentioned ceremony. Recommended motion is that the Lowell City Council adopt Resolution 2718 proclaiming Friday, September 21st, 2018, as Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day.
So move? Support?
Discussion on that. Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
All right. Board and commission reports, Mr. Canfield. Do you want to start?
All right. LARA meeting was September 12th, Phase 1A, from G Drive down to Main Street on Alton Nash is ninety-nine point nine percent done, just a couple of minor items to clean out there. Phase 2 connector down behind Bowes Road, the DNR scores came in last week, right where Dave Austin had predicted they would be, so that's good news. MDOT is having a meeting this week that we are waiting to hear back from them. And just for clarification, the twenty-five thousand dollar city contribution that we discussed a meeting or two ago was agreed to five years ago, along with all the other cities on that hundred-and-twenty-five-mile road that's Felding, Greenville, Ionia, and Saranac. It really has nothing to do with LARA and the Phase 2 connector. That's an agreement that was made a long time ago. We just honor that agreement. And that's it.
All right. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. We started a, looking at a PUD. We're going to try to rapidly get through it and try to make it go forward. Other than that, it's, everything else we usually do, we do.
We do what we do. Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything you can report.
Mr. Salzweedle?
I have nothing.
Any question, discussions, anything on any of the monthly reports? All right. Mr. Burns, your turn. City manager report.
Okay, a couple of items. Earlier this summer, I approached the council about selling...
Oh, hang on. I forgot. I have board and commissioner reports. I didn't... I left myself up. Mike and I went to DDA, talked about some advertising with the chamber, and then that fairground study. And then we'll be meeting Wednesday, correct, with...
Correct.
Representatives for parks and fair people on what's going on down there. Fire authorities have a tender schedule. Delivery on their new truck pushed back to December. We did a study on staffing, looking at... We did a study on staffing, looking at some different options for because their call volumes increasing and staffing is kind of staying steady. So, and then we discussed accounting, a little bit of accounting stuff. Talking about maybe the city taking back more accounting, payroll, stuff for the fire department, like we did.
I need to talk to Jim Rube about that.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that's it. We meet again in October. Now, officially, your turn.
That, earlier this summer, I approached the council about the, about selling the property of 2560 Bose. I finally have finished, put together the RFP. It is going out this week. It will be advertised in the ledger and on the city's website. Minimum, minimum purchase price for the property is $20,000, and deadline is October 14th, I believe, is the date I set. Let me double-check that. Correction, Thursday, October 11th. I apologize. Uh, the Chauvot, Rich and Chris Channelon are pretty close to work, you know, working on the RFP, getting close to a point where they can get that out. I recently contacted Senator Hill to Grant's office about the necessary extensions to extend the funds into the next fiscal year. They have submitted that paperwork to the state and anticipate that we will receive that extension. So I will continue to follow up with the Senator's office on that. Uh, the Hudson Street signs, this week, the sign, the, the speed signs on Hudson Street were turned over to Light and Power so they can install them hopefully sometime later this week. They'll be up and functioning on Hudson. We're still waiting from the state when we can get clearance to put the signs back on main for Bose, but we have to get clearance from MDOT before we can do that. Wanted to alert the council to January 30th. That'll be the date that Vender is here. He'll be, I'll have more information as we get closer to the event, but he'll be back for his annual facilitation session on January 30th. This week, the entire council and myself will be attending the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Grand Rapids. It should be a very educational event. I know for some of you, it's your first time to the MML, and it is, it'll be a very good experience for you. Next week, I will be in Baltimore at the International City-City Management Association Conference, their annual conference. I will be there from Saturday to Wednesday. Also, I'm working on, we're working on an issue. Lighthouses had their industrial pretreatment permit issued to them. It was issued to them last week. There is one issue that we, that Brian, Benamila, and I are still working through with Lighthouse. So when they do get online, that will be an issue for them. But we are, we are working through that. I anticipate, they anticipate, I believe, starting to send us waste, I believe, in a couple of weeks. At least from a preliminary basis until they get their new permanent system. They still anticipate about six months for that, but they're moving along quite well. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Number nine, appointments. We received a communication from Jeff Tickerman for LCTV Endowment Board. Looking for a motion to approve that appointment, I think his resume against, he served.
I will make a motion that we give Jeff that position.
All support?
All right. All those in favor say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff's appointed. Uh, council comments, Mr. Phillips.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Salzweil?
I had fun this weekend at the Paul Burke Plaza, and it was fun setting up. A lot of people. I know the Women's, Lowell Women's Club, which is my wife's, have had a record pussy that they earned this year, so I hope everybody else had a great time to say to them.
Perfect weather, too.
Yeah, it was perfect.
Mr. Canfield?
Uh, just wanted to comment and thank city staff. I've really been out there fixing the sidewalks, raising up the pavers that had settled, getting those back. Thank you for doing that, and a big improvement. Nice to see that done.
Thank you. Mr. Chambers?
I'm good.
All right. I am good, too. Thank you everybody for coming.
Community cleanup is Saturday, the 29th. Might want to mention that.
Community cleanup, Saturday, the 29th. I remember that all by myself. Mr. Salzweil?
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:35.
Support?
All those in favor say goodbye by saying aye.
I'm in the community. Lowell Township, the Gitch Township, the same Lowell.